All accounted for, so unless you want to be redundant. Okay, so we got the pledge?
So we've got the pledge. I'll go ahead and lead us in the pledge, if you all don't mind. Stand, hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm used to, in scouts, one nation under God is all one thing. There's no, it's not one nation under God indivisible. There's no break. It's just one nation under God. And so I do it a little bit faster in that thing, but I'm ahead of other people, so I have to regulate that a little bit. Okay. So we're at the City Villa Park 2022-23 Budget Workshop, first workshop. And there's any other things that-
No public comments, so we can go right into it if you want to.
Hand it off to you to begin.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and council members. Today is our first budget workshop for the fiscal year 2223 budget, which will begin July 1st of this year and will conclude June 30th of 2023. This is the first of two budget workshops we'll have, the second being May 16th, and then the budget adoption will be at the end of June of this year. So the point of today is, much like we've done in past years, is to sort of give you the first orientation at the policy level of what's going on and what we see in the coming year as issues to face. Sort of, our goal is to get action, get reactions from you, input, but there are no formal votes and there is nothing formal of this meeting. It's more a matter of orienting it. We are televising this and streaming this, so people who are interested. The PowerPoint presentation is also on the website, so anybody who wants to can get that later, follow up on it. It'll be streamed again as we do our normal council meetings, so people can watch this at their leisure. We have received no public comments per se. We did receive something from Kathy Tracy, but that was just a comment about how pleased she was. It was not, she did not ask that to be read at the meeting today. What we're going to do, start off, is we'll have Jim do sort of an orientation or sort of a background of where we are at this year, year-end projections, and then we'll start about our revenue assumptions for next year and what our estimated financing is. Then we'll start to talk, I'll highlight the major issues and you guys can sort of weigh in on any of those. Or obviously you can ask questions anytime during the process. Our goal here is to sort of acquaint you with what's going on and what we're dealing with. And a month from now, we'll have much better numbers, we hope, and we'll be able to finalize where we're going. So again, these are, these are estimates at this time, but I think they're, they're probably fairly accurate and close on. And Jim's done a really good job with Alyssa in pulling some of the numbers together. So with that, I will share, and obviously if the public has any questions, they can certainly call City Hall at any time and ask. Jim or I will both be happy to answer questions down the road. Okay, so with that, there's the, there we go, there's, we're going to start with the year-end projections, which Jim will talk about for this year. And the good news is, I can just highlight, we're in budget, we're in budget, we're in good shape financially for this year. And then we'll talk about what our revenue assumptions for next year and then what we have for available financing. So with that, I'm going to pass over to Jim and let him sort of take us through the next couple numbers.
Okay, thank you, Steve. And as Steve said, this is our first pass at the budget, so we're not going to give you the detail tonight, but we'll have that on our next budget meeting if you want. So as Steve said, we'll start with the budget projections, and again, just a brief overview. If you have any specific questions, don't hesitate to ask me. So for 2122, which is the fiscal year that will end on June 30th of 22 this year, we budgeted 5.279950 last year. We are $150,000 under that budgeted number. And that's primarily a result of a couple of grants we have and have not yet been received. That's the Knowles grant, $180,000 from the State Department of Parks and Rec. That money will not be received until the project is done and has been reviewed by the department. So in all likelihood, we will not receive those monies this year. So that will affect, basically, we'll go ahead and re-budget that money into the following year. So that basically is the difference. That's offset against, you know, increases to property tax continue to go up. We saw $140,000 or 5% over last year. License and permits up $23,000, again about 5%, and then plan checks are other major driver in this year's increase in budget or the categories that are increasing.
So just as a comment there, from a budget projection standpoint, that's pretty good, to be that close to our budget number. So I do give credit, I want to, you know, Jim did a really good job of estimating where we're financially. He didn't, he was pretty close on there, so just as a point of reference.
Thank you. Now, the expenditures 2122, we budgeted 5.93 last year. We are looking at 100 and, or 1.2 million dollars under budget. And the result of that is basically because we did not do our sewer project, which we budgeted for 950. We figured there's, there's some additional work that needs to be done before we take on that sewer project. Salaries under $45,000 under budget, and then basically other operating expenses, $200,000. Any questions before we move on? It's, that's pretty high level, nothing specific, if you have any questions. All right. Into fiscal year 2223, so these are our revenue assumptions as we go. As we have discretionary revenues, this is sort of the revenues that the city has discretion, how they're going to spend, or you as the council basically have to spend. Property taxes, again, we're being relatively conservative, 3% increase over this year, and worth $60,000. Sales tax, just a small increase, and we use basically our sales tax service, avenue services, basically estimate 338 next year, which is a 1.6% increase over current year. Just for your knowledge, passport processing fees in 2021, we had zero, basically due to COVID. This year, we're looking at $5,000 and we're projecting again another $5,000. So that's $35, basically, per passport we process, and that basically goes to reimburse us for any mailing fees or end staff time actually doing it. So just a small point, just a small slice. Permit fees, again, we're looking at 160,000 budgeting next year, which is roughly, I think, 3% again over what we budgeted this year. And again, those building permit fees are just driving, and then they begin on up for the last couple of years. We're again being conservative, we just have a small increase over, over last year. And then the tech fee, this, if you remember last year when we approved the new fees, we had that 4% tech fee that generated $14,000, and we're projecting another $14,000 next year that we can use to reimburse, you know, equipment, basically, and equipment upgrades.
So just as Jim has repeatedly said that we're conservatively estimating our revenues, sort of the philosophy that we've operated on is you under-project revenues and over-project expenditures, and you're always going to be safe if you go with that sort of strategy. So Jim and I have always sort of erred in that vein, but that's our overall strategy. If you were to ask us, what do you apply? And generally, Jim, like you said, we're conservative, we're not going to, you know, I think as a property tax growth, we said 3%. And I think, you know, if, more optimistic, you could say, you know, you could go anywhere from 5, 4, 5, 6% and be safe, but at the same time, if you don't realize those revenues and you're counting on them, you plan on spending it, then guess what? You've just, you know, gone upside down. So we don't want to do that. If we get additional revenue, it doesn't go anywhere else, it comes to us regardless, so we're better off just doing it that way. So just sort of giving you the orientation and the strategy of what we're using.
Okay, on to the next page. Those are discretionary revenues, basically which gives us the authority or the ability to spend those where we want. These next set of funds are special revenue funds, and these are restricted. Basically, there's a special purpose on most of these funds, it can only be spent for a special purpose. And the first one being our sewer improvement fund. We receive roughly $400,000 through our sewer assessments per year and can only be spent on the maintenance or improvement of our sewer system. So at the end of this year, June 30th of '22, we will have $1.8 million in that sewer fund. Let's see. Again, Measure 2 or M2 road funding, this is through Orange County Transportation Authority, roughly $100,000 a year. We got a 30% increase over last year because, due to the COVID pandemic, we underestimated, based on what OCTA was giving us, you know, $85,000. So we're up 30% this year. Yes, councilman?
As I recall, there is a periodic disbursement or grant that we receive from the county or the OCTA for maintaining our primary highways like Villa Park Road and Santiago and so forth. When do we expect to receive that?
This may be what you're referring to, because I'm not aware-
There is some funds that come in, but we won't know. OCTA has to make their dispersment, and that's usually in July, so their numbers may vary. So we won't know till later in the year if we're going to get anything beyond what we've already projected here.
Okay, my, my recollection was that this was a, like a, a periodic, you know, big dispersment for maintaining the main highways.
If they've got the grants, you know, they've got, it depends on what OCTA has available, that's what I say. So they have to assess where they are, and typically that'll happen in the spring of the year. And so we'll be notified of availability and potential dispersments toward us. Right now, we don't have anything from them saying what the amount will be beyond the M2 road funding that we have. I think there was, I recall what you're saying, that was some special funding that comes through or when they have access, and that we don't have any knowledge of that at this point.
Okay, yeah, as I recall, you know, this is a few years, maybe six, seven years ago, that we had to, there had to be a match, and so we were not able to do any other street maintenance in Villa Park just so we can meet our match requirements.
No, we've, we have, we've been monitoring that regularly, OCTA, and we-
I believe, now that you mention it, there is an amount that OCT basically said they may have some additional funds. They have not told us what it will be, how much it will be, or when it will be available. But if we do, basically, it could be, you know, miscellaneous or unanticipated income that we can add. But on most of these processes or the M2 funds, there is a, basically, a maintenance of effort. We do have to contribute money in order to get this.
Yeah.
So basically, that usually goes into spending our annual funding, or if we have a street project budget for that year, basically go to pay for that street project too.
Okay, is Meats considered one of those highways that would be covered by that kind of funding?
I believe so. I'd have to verify what there, depends on the eligibility requirements that OCTA sets forth in dispersing the funds. So they may come out and say, well, this is for this purpose or that purpose. And like Jim says, we have not received anything from this point. All we've done is, received is our regular funding, notice of regular funding. So I can certainly check into it, and we can report back to the next budget, but this, next workshop. But right now, we're not aware of any extra funding at this point.
Okay, I'm thinking more along from the expenditure side of things.
Okay, state gas tax, and this is the city's share of the gas tax. $308,000, 20% increase again over 2122 budgeted. And this comes through the State Department of Finance, so allocated to us on a semi-month basis. AQMD funding, again, a small portion, but it adds up over time. We probably haven't any major expenditures out of here since, I think, in the early or the mid-teens. AQMD, Air Quality Management District, we get roughly $7,000 a year. You can only use it basically to spend on something that is going to reduce emissions within the city. So one of the things we're looking at, and Steve will talk a little bit more, is maybe electrifying our city fleet.
They could pay for a charging station for us, for public, for our use, not public use, but so we could put in our back, we'll talk about that later, but that's one of the things we're talking about, is using the money that's provided to us for that purpose.
Again, PEG funding, which is Public Educational and Governmental Access Funding, that is paid by your providers of cable service within the city. They pay us a portion of their sales revenue, and that can only, again, be spent on improving our access to public access is what we're doing right now. So basically, we're buying additional equipment, video equipment, servers, or whatever that may be, in order to improve that access. State park grant, talked a little bit about that. We had $181,000 budgeted for our Knowles project. We've been informed, there may be another $45,000 that is available. Most likely won't be available until, again, 2223 budget.
But then again, we, we had that change order, so that would cover the cost of the change order that we had. And there were some questions about what would be funding it. This, that extra state funding will cover it for us.
And then we got a planning grant, a LEAP grant, basically, which we are using to reimburse for any expenditures that we've used on the housing element report. So again, those funds have not been received, so the, possibly, we could receive them by the year end, which would recognize our revenue. Otherwise, it'd probably be going to come in '22 or '23. Councilman, councilperson, minds?
Question, on the LEAP grant, could we use that money to offset some of the costs for our consultant?
That's exactly, that's what we're, that's what we're charging.
Sorry, didn't make myself clear here. That's exactly what we're doing with it.
Can I go back a step real quick?
Sure.
On the, on the state park grant, is that, if that just covers the change order that we have, or is there possibly other grant funding that could pay for maintenance or continued improvements, or is there-
It's, it's got to be a construction project, so it won't cover, it would not cover maintenance. So under the conditions of this agreement, now, there may be something down the road, which we'll obviously try to pursue, but at this point, it's only for the project itself, so-
How is construction defined? If, like, we put in a new set of, like a tree, seems like a, like a plant or all that, that might be construction, but like, new plants, maybe not.
That's, that is covered. That's part of the landscape, that's part of our application, yes.
Okay.
So all the, all the landscaping was included as part of the project, all-inclusive is what we submitted to them.
Excellent, thank you.
Alrighty, and our last item basically is COVID relief funding. We have got the ARPA money, we're expecting 1.0, almost 1.4 million dollars.
We'll deal that specifically.
We'll deal with that a little bit in the future. We did spend roughly $40,000 of COVID relief funding that we already had on deposit at the start of fiscal year. So all being said, for 2223, our net revenue is $77,000 over our budgeted 2122 number. With that, any questions before we move forward?
Excuse me, I, whether it's a question or if it's a comment or suggestion, take it as you will. I know that everything is costing more, unfortunately, due to some questionable decision-making at the federal and state level, not to mention supply chain issues and the COVID pandemic. But since things are costing more, and I'm concerned about staff and consultant time, are our permit fees potentially going to be readjusted to reflect the inflation issues that we're facing all over with what we're doing?
Yeah, we did our fee structure study last year, so we did update them. However, the CPI that we're experiencing is abnormal and never would have been anticipated. So we'll, we'll go back and look at them, but we've been trying to do it every two years because if you get caught in a one-year cycle, you finish the study, and by the time you do it, we've changed realities.
Totally agree. I just want to make sure that we're having that on our-
It's a good point. No, we have it on, we did, remember, we hired a firm to help us look at all of our fees? And we implemented, had the council approve that schedule just a year ago. So that's been implemented. We started charging it July 1st of 2021.
That's when we employed that tech fee, if I recall, wasn't around the same time?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure, I wasn't sure if it was-
Exactly.
Last year or the year before, but I know that-
You're right on.
Unfortunately, we're all having to pay for it more, and everybody's going to have to charge more just to do the basics.
Yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Hey, Steve, Steve?
Yes.
To Vince's point, have there, have we made adjustments for fuel costs and other things that are going up as a result of some of the, some of the things that are going on with the economy right now?
We have, we have addressed that as part of our expenditure costs for next year, but like I said, we have not updated our fees because it's, it sort of almost takes us months, several months to do a fee study. So we have not done that fee study as of, last one we did was a year ago at this time. So we would go back, our plan would have been go back next year at this time and come back with a new update. And there's no telling what the economy looks like at that time, but we would, we would reflect it. But on the expenditure side, yes, we did try and incorporate CPI indexes into our costs. Thank you.
That is correct. So any other questions there before we move on? You might need your calculator handy. This is a bunch of numbers I'm going to throw at you. This is our estimated financing for the 2223 fiscal year. Starts with our fund balance, and we're, and this is basically our fund balance as of last, or July, June 30th or July 1st of 2021. $5.5 million. We add on our revenue of 5.1 this year, and then projected expenditures, 4.7. That gives us a fund balance reserve of roughly 5.9, and that's pretty much what we have available to spend at this point. Looking at the following year, 2223, and again, this is our first pass at it, so these are just, these are just estimates. We have 5.1 again, we have transfers in and out, and these are basically just inter-fund transfers from one fund to another, generally, the general fund. Operating expenditures, again, 5.9.
No, 4.9, or 4.5.
4.5, excuse me, what do I got, 4.9, okay, 4.9, yeah. And then we have our capital projects there of 3.1. That includes our street project, our street rehab project, plus our sewer project, a 1.5. So you're coming to fund balance at the end of the year at $3.4 million.
And that's consistent with what you see is we do the cycle, we do projects every two years. So we're, you know, run down, and we'll, we'll build that up over the next two years and then do our next project. So that's very consistent with our approach, and we would expect that kind of number.
Okay, so we have our available, we have $8.3 million available in 2223, and this covers basically our fund balance plus all our revenues for the new, we're estimating for the new year to cover our operational expenses and our capital projects. And compared to basically $8.3 million that we have available in 2122, again, that covers our operational and our capital project expenditures.
So what we're seeing is we're basically, because of the way we're, you have to project revenues and carry forward, et cetera, we're relatively flat, but there's a lot of projects that will be done that weren't done this year. So that, sort of, it's, it's a deceptive look at it, but overall, like Jim was saying, there's 77,000 increase in net revenue.
And what I basically can say in there is that we have, and that's, this was the city as a whole. Within the general fund, we have $3.3 million in the general fund. And then we have 2.9 in our reserves, so we roughly have $900,000, basically, in addition to spend for the coming fiscal year, sort of discretionary monies. Any questions on that?
Now we'll get into-
Baffled everybody, huh?
Now we'll get into how we're going to spend that and issues that we're facing. So we'll talk and I'll sort of lead on this, and Jim will help me answer any questions. I apologize about the noise in the background. If we shut the doors, it gets a little stifling in here, so we want to keep it going. Uh, yeah. Yes, it's, it's nice, it's really pleasant. Okay, so, okay, there we are. Continuation of 2122 projects, the Villa Park Knowles, which Jim indicated, it's a $385,000 project. It's $225,000 from the state, Villa Park Community Service Foundation, $75,000. The Women's League is putting $10,000, and the city will remain what we originally said at $75,000. So it has not changed, even with the change order. Because we're able to secure those monies from, additional money from the state, we're right where we thought we'd be when we started the project from a city perspective, which is, again, kind of the goal, not have to spend our money if we didn't have to. We will continue, we had $25,000 budgeted, but because everything we're doing, and we've had some transit engineering, we have not done, the handicap access corners and things we've done have not been the $25,000. So candidly, because of the projects we've got going, we want to continue doing as a program, but just scale it back to 10,000 as opposed to the 25,000. So I think that's, we're trying to get, what we can realistically get done, instead of just budgeting a number, is where we are.
Steve, if I can stop you there?
Yeah.
I would say that any handicap ramps will basically be included in the-
Right, yeah.
Cost of the project, so this is almost an additional.
Yeah, so we, so when we do the road projects, those streets that, you know, have access, you know, trails or, or whatever, those are all dealt with as part of the street project and built into the cost inclusive. So we are doing them as we move along. These are separate projects, individual corners we've identified.
Apologies. So just to clarify, so say for instance, we were to resurface Street X, and Street X currently does not have curb cuts or handicap accessibility, but when we go to resurface in a significant way, not just a slurry, we would make those curb cuts and make those handicap ramps part of that process?
Yes, and then we-
And part of the budget?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then the other thing is, when we redo a street, why, you see us, why did you replace those, those, I don't even know what they're called, dimples, I kind of, my kids call them dimples, that's, I guess, well. The, the things on the ramps that, boom, 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 you know, when you go over them, when you go down onto the street, we have to replace those and bring them up to current standards. So all of those projects include that. In order to spend state and federal money, we have to bring those up to speed. So that's part of the project, and like I say, inclusive in the bidding and the work being done. So yes, you'll see that on all the projects, like, I think we had, we did them on Serrano, we did them on those streets. And you'll wonder, well, we took out perfectly good ones and put in new ones. It's because they're new specifications and what's required from the state and the handicap accessibility, but those are part of project.
How many, how many curbs have not yet been retrofitted with the ramps?
That's a good question. I don't have, I don't have a number. I can check on that, but I don't have the number. I'll have to check.
No, I know we've been dealing with this for years, and it seems to be languishing.
Okay, then we are, I'll get that back to you with, I just don't have a number off the top of my head. The continuation of council priorities, the capital projects, infrastructure. As Jim indicated, we have sewer maintenance and pump station. We have, will be 1.8 million available by 622, so we estimate we'll probably spend 1.5 million. We have a master plan that you'll be awarding for evaluation of all of our sewer system, and that will be awarded, I believe, as part of our agenda in a week from now. So we have a firm that will evaluate every single one of our sewers and what capacity they're at, et cetera. As you'll recall, this is an important issue because under SB 9, we, the only criteria by which you can deny a lot split is if your, you know, sewer or water utilities don't accommodate. So we don't control water, but we do control sewers. So we will have a good database upon which to look at. If somebody comes in and says, we want to do a lot split, we'll be able to say, that's fine, you can do it, but you also have to upgrade the sewer at this, you know, bring it to whatever level. So we will have that information, we will be, that's going to be awarded as a contract next Tuesday night. So that's what we're moving forward in an effort to sort of get ahead of the curve and have quantifiable data in which to do it. Now, what that does, if somebody comes in and says, I want to do an SB 9, it doesn't stop them from doing a lot split. What it does, it makes them have to incur the cost of the upgrade, as opposed to the city. We can charge them on that. So that's one of the goals, and it becomes, if you've ever done sewer upgrades, you realize that's a rather expensive endeavor. So that would sort of make some of them potentially cost prohibitive. At a minimum, it would make sure our system can handle it, so those residents who are already there are not impacted by what work would be done.
Do we have a mechanism in place that works with the water district to ensure that, say, the 2,500 square foot home that was once on a lot in 1965 that is now being built at 7,000 square feet or 6,000 square feet can ensure that? Because I don't recall when we built up our house going through that.
We, you did, because what we do, we do is part of the, before, before our building inspector signs off on a notice of occupancy, we have to have a notice of service received from Serrano Water District. In other words, Serrano has to say, yes, they can service that property. So there are a lot of properties where we won't let people move in until we get that from, from Serrano. And we work with them, probably on the phone with them pretty regularly, I know. Because people get frustrated, they want to have us just issue the notice of occupancy, but we won't do that until we have that notice-
Okay.
From Water District.
Good to know, thank you.
I'd like to follow up on that. Let's look at the other end. If you have more water service being served to a larger house and so forth, you also have more wastewater being discharged into the collection system. Is there, do we have any recovery for that to, you know, for the additional load on our sewer system?
Well, that's, that's, yes, we can charge them for that. That's the point, to see what the load would be and what we have capacity-wise. So if some, if we know something's 95%, we would have them provide us information on what, we would know what that would generate, and we can tell them, okay, this is not, this is going to exceed, and you have to pay for the accommodation to upgrade, to allow us to accommodate that. So yes, the point of that study is to get us to that point. We'd have the information, exactly what you've said, so that they, we can tell the owner, you can do this, but you have to pay for the additional load accommodation.
Well, actually, I wasn't thinking so much in terms of increased densification, but just for the existing conditions, where guys like Councilman Bosini that adds to his house and builds additional restrooms in so, or-
Right.
In his house and so forth, and has- In his house and so forth and has, uses more water, uses, and discharges more wastewater. Is there a cost recovery for that or is that just considered part of the?
Yes, we, that's what, we have to know where our system is and that's what we're trying to do is get a handle on our system, but we have the ability.
Anything currently.
Yeah, we will, we will have them, yes, we do have them fix their laterals or whatever the requirement is to capacity, to bring us up to capacity.
No, I'm talking about currently, if somebody, you know, increases their demand on the sewer system, does the city recover any of the?
Yes, yes, we do. We, we charge them for that now. But one of the problems is we don't know exactly, you know, how much additional, you know, how much the system is already.
Right, I understand that issue too, yeah.
So that's what we're trying to get to is yes, but we do charge them and they're responsible for that additional cost.
Okay.
Okay, so the other thing is we have the twenty-two, twenty-three street rehab project that we're in design. You awarded the contract in several months back and I can't remember exactly, that was the eighty thousand dollars we had for engineering. That will be completed this June and we'll start, we'll go out to bid and we'll start work on it this late summer. We'll be able to start our project. We will estimate our project between one point six million and two million as a project. Somewhere in that range exactly, it will, a lot will depend on where our fund balance ends up, et cetera. But one of the things that a couple of meetings ago, the council had directed us to do, and for the record, you'd asked us to place Churchill Squires and Dotson as part of the priority. And we have incorporated that engine, the engineering, and we will be moving forward on that as part of the project. So they are engineering right now, they're part of the park package, and they will be included as a package down the road based on the direction from the council to come back during budget and, and include that as a priority. So we have that there.
That's good to hear.
Slurry seal project, we had a hundred and twenty-eight, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand in twenty-twenty-one. We will put a hundred thousand in there. As we experienced in one of these streets, the residents preferred not to have slurry seal. So putting money in there is, you know, we have an issue if people are not going to willingly accept slurry seal. We, they may have to wait, so we don't want to just budget money. So we're backing down a little bit on what we do for slurry seal as far as budgeting there. We have.
Is that a, a public perception that we need to discuss? Because I know my experience with slurry seal has been that it actually fills in a lot of the cracks and does a lot of the repair and, and prolongs the life of the road. But, so my experience with it has been positive and yet what we've heard from residents is that it's been negative. So I just want to make sure that we, is it, is it something where we need to like have a campaign to describe what this is so people understand it? Instead of just being like, oh, you're, the description of painting our roads is, I think, pretty inaccurate for what slurry seal is. It does a lot more than that and.
I, I think the desired mode, and you talked to the engineers, they would prefer to do the, the removal and start and repave it entirely. It is a short-term fix, it's not a long-term fix and that's a, you know, so in, in some senses, it is, it is putting a coat on there that, but it's not the same as repaving something, so you don't get the, the long-term results. So on the short-term, it does do some good, but at the long-term. So what we're trying to do is re-shift into the pavement, which is, gives us a longer return and probably a better bang on our money. But we still have streets that we can slurry seal and we'll continue to do those as a, as a project. Because I believe that will provide us some longer-term, you know, some help in, in moving.
Well, just a question, just for clarification, I guess, but along the point of Mayor's comment, don't we have a process that we follow guidelines and whatnot that will help determine whether or not a street gets rehabbed or slurry sealed? So how much, I don't, I'm cautious because I don't want to stray from if we have a standardized process and where streets fall in that category based on them fitting certain criteria, we can't just, you know.
But that criteria is sort of driven by a capitated amount available. So if we're putting money in slurry seal or putting money in pavement, we're going to try and go with pavement where we can because we're going to get longer-term results as a, as a thing. So, so we have streets that we could obviously do a lot more to. So that is a criteria, but there's a breakpoint. Where do you draw the line? If we can move, you know, so it's kind of like we have X amount of money and we spend X amount on slurry seal and we have that much less available for the pavement. So we have streets that we could do, we could always, we could do a lot more in this city. I think Councilman Colacott has, has pointed out in the past, there are a lot of streets that we don't get to, that we could get to if we move the money in that direction. So we have a process to evaluate the priorities of who we get to first. But it's not to say there are streets that, every street that needs to be done is not necessarily being done.
Can I just ask that we break that out maybe a little bit?
Sure.
And come back to, I mean, if it's like, we can do ten roads that are slurry sealed versus one more construction, then that is pretty clear, like, let's see how many need slurry, but we need to see what those numbers are. Or if it's like two to one, then yeah, let's move more towards like just doing the one.
Slurry seal, slurry seal is, is much less expensive. But you're going to get five years, if you do a road, you're going to get anywhere from ten to twenty if you repave it. You're going to get a much longer lifespan. So, you know, there, there's a cost to that quality of what you're doing. So from a cost perspective, slurry seal will buy time because if we can't get to some of these streets that need it, it will cover that. So it's sort of, we come to you each time we have a project and identify what we believe. And I think that's part of the process they evaluate is what, what streets are not in dire straits enough that, you know, right now, we can probably last a couple more years until our next project or whatnot. So that's how we're doing it, but we can certainly try and break, break, give you some more detail on that.
I had one more request on that too, that I know we get a list of what the index code is on each of the streets. Could we also add to that what year it was last improved? I don't think that's on there.
To the best of our records, some of these streets have never been improved.
That, that's what I'm, I'm wondering is if we don't have a year, then let's put that, that way we can see like, oh, well, this has still got a good index, but it hasn't been improved in fifty years and that might be a, a red flag to us as well so that we can compare that.
A few years ago, we actually tried to develop that information. Unfortunately, a lot of our records were purged by a previous council back in the nineties and we don't have records before nineteen eighty. So like our records about Churchill, we don't have an actual record, but we have residents recollect, you know, that have lived there for a long period of time. And, you know, our, you know, what records we do have, you know, you kind of piece together the information. So yeah, it's, it's.
We're back to that historical document stuff, yeah.
It's important it's not.
We'll, we'll provide what we can and we'll do from there.
Yeah, best you can do, thank you.
I can add, basically, based on recent estimates, we're looking at seven hundred thousand dollars per mile to resurface a street. As opposed to.
That's good to know.
And slurry seal is good to keep a road that's in pretty good shape from deteriorating further. It's a preventive maintenance measure, but when you have streets like Churchill and Squires and, and others where the cracks are, you know, too developed, the slurry seal is not going to fill the, the crack. You need to go in and repair the road. And other places where you've got subsidence, you've got to, you know, basically take out the asphalt and reconstruct that portion of the high, of the road, so. But it's a, it's a good measure to, to extend the life of a good street that's in good, relatively good condition, except that just has minor cracks.
Okay, then moving on, we have street pothole repair. And these are not, like, these are, rains may come and all of a sudden we have a problem and we realize. You guys come across and somebody says, hey, I just hit a big pothole on such and such. And so those are sort of temporary repairs that we'll do. We, we have them out throughout the city and occasionally, so we budget forty thousand and that doesn't actually get spent. Hopefully it doesn't, if you have a good year and, you know, with less rain, you're not going to have that. But occasionally we do and we have to do it, so that's where we take care of the business there. So we set aside money each year for basically a street pothole repair. DG, the similar type of thing, we have twenty-five thousand. The rains, we have, some of our trails are built on inclines, as you're aware. And with rain comes, you know, runoff. With runoff takes away DG. If it's not compacted or done right over the years, that sort of takes its, its thing. So we are working and there are various types of DG that I don't, I'm not an engineer, so I don't understand all of the different compositions, but there are some now that will resist runoff better. So we're trying to replace all those that we can. It's the way that the particles are fixed together and I, there's a mixture and I, you know, can, that's about as far as I go with it. But basically, that's what we're trying to do, so we don't have those. We do have some that if you go down like on, on some of our streets, especially when you're coming down from the hillier portion, you'll see that, you'll see it after the rains and you start to get it, erosion happening there. So we put in twenty-five thousand there. The next item is fleet replacement. Our vehicles are, two of our vehicles, sedans, were both donated and they are really old tanks, if you will. They don't get much mileage, et cetera. So we have the ability to use AKMD monies to purchase electric vehicles and to start, and install a charger station. So one of the things are, we, we are doing is getting costing out. Right now, to get an electric vehicle of the type we'd need, sedan or whatever, we're probably talking almost a year to get it from now. So if we put the order in now, it might be a year from now before we see it. But we're also looking at potentially replacing the trucks that we have, the pickup trucks or whatever. And as technology gets better, the costs hopefully drop and we can use this money. And it has to be used exclusively for this types of things. So every vehicle that we keep in, the, the ones we have right now, the sedans definitely need to be replaced. We can replace the pickup possibly with something that, you know, could be done electric. But the sedans, we were thinking we could get even a Prius or some, you know, something along those lines that could be easily charged and run. We don't need to have those big things and, and just, you know, they eat up gas and they eat up maintenance and their batteries go dead because they're not used often and et cetera, and the tires just, you know, they sit. So what we want to do is start that and use this money to help replace our fleet. And so we replace our fleet, which we would have to do anyway, but this would allow us to move forward on that. Then we move into some of the general council priorities. State of the city, we had budgeted a couple of years ago, ten thousand dollars. We have not pursued it and it's sort of, not much action's been taken on that. So we have pulled that out of the budget.
I'll see, so I think state of the city is a great idea, but with COVID maybe wasn't appropriate or didn't, didn't manage, didn't materialize. But I, I, I'm not doing a state of the city this year either, but I, I still think it's a.
It's something we certainly can say. I agree with you, it's something, the timing is everything. And then the other thing is pulling it all together, which is, it's an effort. And as pulling together anything, we were fortunate, Councilwoman Miles did the, the Winter Wonderland and that's an, an effort. And you need somebody to spearhead this type of thing and we, it is a project. So if the mayor wants to do that, ten thousand dollars, certainly we have monies available in our discretion, we could do that. But, but we're not planning on it right now because nobody's really jumped up and said, let's do it. Winter Wonderland, last year there was discussion of moving that over, we had fifteen thousand budgeted. So I believe there have been discussions with the foundation. The foundation has agreed to, this year at least, pick up fifty-five hundred dollars of that. And based on the budget, I think it was like thirteen fi, thirteen thousand and twelve, so the city would have seventy-five hundred, which is half again what we budgeted in the past with the hopes that in the future we would continue that transition. So we have reduced the Winter Wonderland based on the prior direction. The, the pro, the program would not be reduced, the funding would be changed and the foundation would take over. But I think they want to have a gradual transition to see how it goes and what's entailed, et cetera. So I believe that's, and Councilwoman Miles, you've talked to the foundation, so I think that's what it.
Correct, that was, and I brought it up and I believe it was Councilman Colacott who kind of came up with the idea two years ago maybe about the foundation taking it over. And the first year it was a problem because they had already secured their budget. And so this year being put as the liaison for the foundation, I was able to bring it up before they, they voted on the budget and a great discussion ensued and they all agreed that fifty-five hundred is what they felt comfortable with for the start to see how it went. Forrest Case, who does all their event planning, is excited and has great ideas. I told him I would, you know, guide and counsel him and that I would bring it back to you guys. So the seventy, seven, seven thousand five hundred dollars is kind of the, the delta from what it cost last year, what I know it can work, what does work, and then less than fifty-five hundred.
So, and then lastly, the council travel is ten thousand, that's consistent. Because of COVID, it's minimally spent, we report each month on how much is spent, but we're going to continue. I believe that as we sort of start removing and get back to a sense of normalcy, you'll start seeing more travel. And so we're going to budget that, that's two thousand dollars per member. And I think that's where we were last couple of years by action, so I think we're planning on doing that again and have that in the budget. So that's a continued item. Okay. Next page, we'll start talking about some of the external mandates or the contracted issues we have. Our biggest and most prominent, obviously, is our law enforcement contract. It's about one point nine million dollars for next year, that's a three point five five percent increase. That's our second estimate, our first estimate was actually higher than that, so they've come down. It's only a seventy-two thousand dollar increase. I'm, we, we got the estimate from the sheriff the first time and both Jim and I thought this is going to go up more. It's, it's just going to go up. But it actually went down, seventy-two thousand is actually a three point five percent is the second lowest increase in the county of all the cities that they're charging. Many of them are experiencing anywhere from six to seven percent increase. We are not, and that's the same basic level of service, which includes a motor that we would have half time. So our twenty hours, I forget the number of hours per month. Twenty a month or something like, is it? Twelve, twelve a month, anyway, but that's, it's a continuation of that. So I know the, I think we're, we're, we're getting the same level of service and it's a minimal increase, three point five. Given all the things, I'm, I'm shocked, so I'll be saying. Animal control is twenty-two thousand that we spend, that's based on our estimate. We had twenty-one thousand, thirty-three thousand in this year. So it's interesting, the way the formula works, the county's costs are not decreasing. Our utilization is decreasing, in other words, they're getting caught, less calls for service. So there's no reason, we have a very high, we have like a ninety-five percent licensure rate. So thank you all, the residents of Villa Park, because that revenue gets credit against us. People are paying for their annual licenses for dogs. Cats is a different story, but that's universally, people don't license cats as a general rule. Animal shelter contribution, it's the same as it was last year, five point four thousand, five, five hundred and forty thousand dollars. And it's, we have a balance of about twenty-two thousand that we owe on it. CJPIA, which is our insurance premium, we all kind of expected this and were notified this because of our settlement when the Mesa Henderson storm drained, our increase is going to be a hundred and forty-nine thousand. Specifically, twenty-six thousand is specifically due just to the impact of the settlement. So just as an FYI, we, we all need insurance and we're there. NV five engineering services, you know, we've had a transition in services and one of the things, I've talked to the contract provider, et cetera. We, you'll see on the contract next month, this, next week, there is a contract adjustment and we decided there was going to be no increase and then a two percent increase and a four percent increase. And he, because of the cost of securing engineers, et cetera, he has a upfront cost. So we've sort of re-proportioned that. It's seventy-five hundred or eighty-four hundred dollars for the life of the contract. So it, it brings money forward as opposed to staring it out over multiple years. So it is an increase, but that's something that I certainly would recommend. Homeless shelter operational contribution, seven point five thousand, seven hundred and fifty thousand, I'm sorry, seven thousand five hundred. That's consistent with what we had. However, having been drawn into court two weeks ago, Judge Carter has not left the case and he has a very active interest in solving it before he leaves the bench, which I can only anticipate potentially being more of an obligation for all the cities. Specifically, he called in the North County cities and we are being, there was a, the litigants basically came against us again. And this time they added the ACLU with them as well, so they've got a little bit of things. So we'll be spending a little bit of time potentially in the court and I think Todd provided you all with an update. What that means, I don't know, but Judge Carter was adamant and we sat, as we sat there and he sort of told us his position that we need to solve this problem sooner than later. So what that means, we'll see. But I do expect us to have some action pending on the court, as Todd indicated. Municipal election costs, we didn't have an election this year, but we're going to have a fifteen thousand dollar election next year. Three seats will be up and that's a cost that we do not have any control over, that's administered by the county's registrar voters. So we'll have a fifteen thousand dollar cost that we didn't incur this year, we will incur next year. Unless, of course, there is no uncontested race, and if it's an uncontested race, we won't incur. We will incur state and federal costs, so there's not going to, we're not going to lose a fifteen thousand dollar totally. We'll lose a portion of that that would be attributed to the municipality elections for the council. But there are still congressional and state seats that are up that we have to participate in and we share our costs on that. So as an answer to it, if there is an uncontested, three candidates, three seats, no, no election on, for municipal, then in that case, we would reduce that cost down, but we won't know until after the election what that would be. Right now, the registrars told us probably thirteen to fifteen thousand is what they're telling us. Yeah.
Are we looking at?
Are we looking at any potential costs associated with trying to get our housing element approved?
Yeah, we have, you saw that up there, the housing element, that was the first item on the last page. We talked about 83,000 that we had budgeted there that would continue. The third item down on the previous page, housing element and zoning, which would be zoning as well.
But, okay, we can discuss it later.
Okay, then technology, as with any new, we potentially have three seats available. We have to recognize that's a reality. We could have, and we have, the other thing is, so we could have to buy new computers for the council members. At the same time, our cell phones, as you know, there's a planned obsolescence that happens with phones, as my daughter found out. They don't maintain certain levels of, you know, she had an iPhone six, it's now not being serviced. So we had to get her a new one and there's costs associated with that. So we're putting 6,000 in. If we don't need it, we won't spend it, obviously, but we are building, that would build, you know, the, for the council and the staff replacement of costs. Then as Jim mentioned, we have a budget financial system, annual subscription of $13,000, which we plan to play with with ARPA, which I'll talk in a little bit. Okay. The next issue, and if there are any questions, I can move forward.
Can I, on a proposal, so I know a lot of us have brought our own devices or done things. Just as a throwing it out there kind of thing, iPads work really well for all the display properties. And can be purchased through the long-term plans through any of the phone companies, which include an upgrade. So like my phone or my iPad is like $56 a month, which is like, you know, on a yearly basis. And then it gets upgraded every two years. That kind of plan for us would all make sense to get us a device that wasn't too costly and stayed with, stayed current.
The, I agree with you. The current policy says at the discretion of the council member. They get to pick what they want. So I, we can change the policy, that's certainly up to the council. But as shared, we're budgeting based on what current council policy is. So if a council member comes in and says, I want this, they have the.
I didn't even think about it, this is my personal one, so that's just what I'm using and it's on my plan, so I'm paying for it. But I guess we're saying at the discretion of the city or.
It is in there that one of the things that's built into our city policies, the city will furnish, furnish those to council members. Both a cellphone and a computer, laptop computer.
I'm all set now, but if anybody else wants something like this, I highly recommend it.
And I would, I would just remind you all that to the extent you implicate or utilize your personal devices as a public records, those personal devices are now public records. So you are now, if you do any city business on your private phone, that now has to be, you know, information, private information gets redacted. But you have now have to, you know, produce that material from your private phone. Many people don't want to do that, several council members have said, I'm not doing that. You know, that's not, you know, what I do with my other stuff and I'm not going through the process. So there is a redaction process that would entail, but you have to prove and show them what you've redacted, et cetera.
Got it, now, so if I've used this just for like the city council meeting, like this presentation is up here or, but I'm not actually, and all of my city stuff is maintained on a specific city phone. I wouldn't necessarily have to bring, present this device.
Anytime you've done city business on a private phone and Todd can clarify, but I believe on a private device, that private device is subject to scrutiny.
Okay, good to know.
I think it's just a warning that everybody needs to understand. So to the extent you bring in, so I carry two phones. My kids call me on one, you guys call me on another, that's why you see different phones in my hand all the time.
Got it.
So, okay. And I've resisted the urge to use my laptop, my personal laptop for work. I come in and I use the one here or I do whatever, so.
And I can add, we have a couple of iPads for building inspector.
Yeah, that's what we're doing with the building.
$29 a month, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, so ready, go forward, okay. Salaries and employee benefits, that's, like you say, we were under budget this year. We are, a couple of things are salary range adjustments that we have where we brought people in and where their range is. So that's 35,000 to be adjusted, where we had applied the merit pool last year. Then merit increases, I was suggesting a pool of 3%. CPI is running extensively higher than that, but I think that's a realistic expectation that we could, we have to do something. And I would be very uncomfortable if we didn't have something in there. So 3% on a merit pool basis, not distributed necessarily equally, but distributed based on merit and evaluation. Another issue has come up and I, with much dismay, Jim has announced that he'll be leaving us this summer. Actually enjoying his real retirement instead of working as a second career. And with that, we are having to hire. So I've already started recruitment process and one of the stumbling blocks I have is that 30 to, turns out to be much more than a 30-hour position when you, you know, especially in the first year or two. We don't have health benefits, so somebody's, you get a certain type of person that's willing to do it. Either somebody who's in retirement and we continually have, this is my, this will be my fourth finance director and they've been the same route where they're retirees and then they go on to whatever. Or you're going to get somebody very young who uses a step zone and will continue to move out. So if you really want to have any continuity, it's my recommendation that we be willing to offer health insurance to this position. We haven't in the past, but I think for $11,000, you're going to have continuity. And like I said, I've been here five years and this is my fourth, would be my fourth finance director. And we're lucky that we have the quality of people we do, but I'm running out of people I know that are retiring or willing to come over. So I think that's something that we need to, and that's sort of an issue I want to have, make clear that it's something there, it's very important. If they were to go anywhere else at the level of which we're asking to come in, they would get health insurance. There's absolutely no question that they'd be getting health insurance. And so it's, we're not competitive. So to get somebody that's going to inequality or whatever, unless you're getting someone who's walking straight out of school, doesn't have the experience that we're probably going to want and need to be protected, that's an issue for us. Anyway, my salary, there is no increase, it's a flat number, same as when I was brought in. So from my perspective, rather than they give me something, I'd rather we pay the finance director, have continuity there. That's much more important than adjusting anything I would have as a salary. So that's, that's where my priorities are. Calpers contribution rates, you all know we have members in contribution, $20,000 increase. Just so you know, Villa Park is between 80 and 85% funded, which is considered well-funded in a retirement system and a public retirement system especially. That includes our Section 115 trust, so the city's been putting money aside. That's a very important thing when, when all cities now, if you talk to any of your counterparts in other cities, they'll talk about pending Calpers costs that are coming their way. We're not going to face that because we have the, we're prepared and we're well-funded and we continue to put money aside. And our rate increase is $20,000 increase, which is again, compared to the purrs that other people are facing, we're in very good shape. And I almost, almost hesitate to tell my colleagues, other city managers, what, what we have to pay as increase compared to them. Many of these are looking at half a million dollars or much more to pay out. So we're, and Fire Authority, I know they're having a big hit and, you know, that's a, it's a big number. Reserves and contingencies, 50% is the city policy and that number was 1.998. Based on our numbers, because of minimal growth, our general fund, we could only bring that to 2,050,000. So we don't have, we have maybe, what's that, $52,000 or $53,000 if my math is correct, that we could add to be 50%. So we are not in a position where we need to be adding much to get to 50%. And candidly, if the council felt like they didn't want to deal with it, it's not something, it's a mandatory that you put money in. But if you were straight, stay at 50%, the city policy is you can't exceed 50% of your general fund operating. It doesn't say you have to be there. So you are 48, 49% funded, somewhere in that range?
That's where we, that's what we're looking at this year, yes. If you, if you want to keep 50% funding, you're taking money from somewhere else.
Yeah. So we're, Jim and I, we're not planning on it this year because we're so close. 52,000 is not going to make a significant difference, except maybe perception wise. But when you're at 48 or 49% to get you 50%, it's, it's $52,000. So it isn't a lot. Budget contingency, one of the things we talked about is 150,000, we continually budget that each year. But I don't spend that this year, each year, we spend less than that. So we are saying, let's drop it to $120,000 and I think that's probably very realistic. And obviously, if a city manager or staff needed something, they can move forward and come to the council at any meeting and say, we need something else and here's how we're going to fund it. So that's something that we're, we've got done. If there are any other questions, I can move forward to the next.
Steve?
Yeah.
Could we, could we drop that budget contingency by the amount required to get us to the 50% for the reserve?
We would have to add 52,000 to be at 50%.
Right, right. So then instead of, you said that it was previously, previously 150,000 budgeted for the budget contingency, so it would then be at like.
We've already got 30,000 taken from it, so we use 30,000 elsewhere already. So we would have to take, that would leave us $60,000 in that contingency. So we haven't, we didn't want to go much lower than that.
Got it.
And I'll be quite candid.
I missed the part about the 30.
40, 50,000, so.
I missed the part about the 30,000 somewhere else.
All right. This is sort of an interesting issue. We received, and I'm going to kind of, the pandemic, everyone asks, what did you get for pandemic monies? We got a lot of money. In '21 and '22 and 2021, we received pretty close to 300, oh, maybe 350,000. You recall in CARES Act, we had 57,000 we put for recovery preparation. We couldn't spend it all, we only, we had to turn 17,000 back. 239,000 we put out in business recovery grants, et cetera, including paying the business license fees for a year. So we put out 239,000 for our businesses here. And then we had some meal gap services, which the Rotary really helped us with for about $9,800. Pam Dunn led that charge and did a great job with the Rotary. And then we had emergency food kits, which we spent 19,000, which were extremely popular. And we had those gone within a week. They were completely done. FEMA reimbursements, we had, we submitted a claim for 35,000, were denied. We have no other claims pending and I'm candidly, I'm not optimistic that we would get any if we did. We were denied in the first place. They have a threshold that you have to hit and our 35,000 isn't, wasn't enough to hit even a threshold. So then we're left with ARPA monies, which is 1.4, almost 1.385 million. And we received two increments, we already received 692,000. We'll get our balance of 692 in this year, later this spring. These are not in our budget figures with the exception of the monies we spent for the budget system. That's the only thing we spent. So the money, according to Department of Treasury, has to be spent by 2024. So one of the things that I've talked to, you know, the, there's a value in sometimes not jumping and spending the money right away, but waiting till the final directions are coming out. The final directions on this allowed cities to, to basically get an exception. And basically, we could put 1.2 million and transfer it into our general fund. So it's a one-time hit, basically, sort of like a deduction you get on your taxes. You can apply for a unilateral, here it is, 1% or whatever. So that for us well covers our 1.385, so we will get that. Now, the problem with that is ARPA monies under the Department of Treasuries require a significant, significant level of auditing, tracking, et cetera. So I'll give credit to one of my other city manager friends who said, hey, pay for your law enforcement costs. The sheriff already tracks their expenses and their billings to you, so it's all audit-proof. And you then free up your general fund that you had to pay your, so that's one of the things that we will be doing is transferring and paying our sheriff costs with the 600. And we pay 4.9 million, so there's no problem. I'm sorry, 1.9 million, so we have no problem covering that. And then we have basically the 1.385 becomes general fund money that we can spend how you want to. And we don't have to do the audits and we're not subject to, we're not subject to the same level of detail. And to the extent when they come through, the auditors, we just basically send them over to sheriff and say, sheriff, produce your time sheet records, your audit expenditures, et cetera. So we're, we're in, that's sort of one of the things we're doing, which allows us a lot more discretion and it provides an improved audit trail for us. And with us, it doesn't, you know, we don't have to do it. So the spending plan, what are we talking about for that? One of the things that Jim and I've said is, and we've talked about, and I know Councilman Colacott is, we should, we could put another million dollars or close to a million dollars into our street projects. So we could expand what we're doing from a 1.6 project to a 2.6, which is huge, more, you know, not quite doubling it, but a lot of money toward that. So that would do it and I think we would be able to move forward. As I mentioned earlier, there are a lot of streets we just don't get to because of threshold of what's available. We have another million dollars available, we're going to get a lot more streets done. So that's one of the things. Now, we haven't identified those streets because that's a decision the council's going to have to make if they want to do it this way. We're talking about, you know, in a previous iteration of a spending plan, we had a business recovery activities, we said 100,000. Again, I don't think it's bad, some of the ideas that are coming out. And it's, it only helps us and helps the business in the city if we were to, like San Ana is giving credit cards to their residents. Only good at businesses within their city. So, you know, you can do, there's a lot of creative things that we can do potentially. Now, these aren't locked in, but this is the kind of things. City hall maintenance, as you know, we do not have air conditioning at this time. One of the things we're trying to do is, and the other thing is lighting, our lighting is old and is problematic. It's not the, the type of lighting that we should be using and it's, it's expensive, old stuff that was done years and years ago. So we're going to spend probably half of this on our HVAC system to replace that. So we're saying $100,000 to do that. If you were to increase your reserves, going back to what Councilwoman Miles, here's your 51,000 that we could identify to push it to 50%. So we did find another place using that money if we free it up. The new budget system is 50,000, which we've already talked about. We could put another 30,000 in continuing to expand and you put the runoff resistant trails in, which is obviously good, good to do. And then we would have 53,000 that would be future projects or council priorities. So that's another way to look at it. We have not spent this money, this is not locked in. Only thing we would like to do is budget appropriations in this amount. So we'll, you know, we will come back at a different time and discuss exactly how you want to spend that because we need to have a spending plan in place.
We don't have to have a spending plan in place for that within the next two years because we're already covering the must be spent by 2024 by giving it to the law enforcement. We could say something like, all right, we have 1.4 million. Over the next seven years, we spend $200,000 a year or something.
Exactly, you could bank that for however you want to do, but we're just talking about, I think it probably makes sense to prioritize where you want things to go and, and, you know, this council to move forward. If you have projects, we do have projects here that we're listing, like the capital, I would suggest you do go ahead on like a capital project because we are dealing with streets that are, you know, need to be moved forward. So to the extent we have money, it's not our money, the federal money is giving us, it's like, it's right on track for that. So I think that's something that makes sense, but again, it's a council priority. And you can bank the 1.3 million and say, we're not going to do any of it. And just hold off and let future councils or whatever decide.
I'd say do nothing, I'm just saying.
Nothing right now, nothing right now. I get what you're saying, yes. You have that option, you have the flexibility. And I don't think we're asking, what we want to do is be able to transfer, put the money in and recognize the revenue so that we can charge the sheriff grant against it.
I think that's a great idea.
So that's what we.
I would say on our street projects, it basically gives us additional million dollars. We're looking at 1.6 without that money or we're looking at 2.6 with that money.
So, so when, when we, when we receive the list of recommended streets for the 1.6 million, will we also get, could we also get a list of like, hey, if you want to use that other capital million dollars?
We'd already reproved the list for the 1.6, as you recall, because they're engineering that already.
Right, so then.
So it, yes, you would get another list, yes.
This year?
Whenever, whenever we, whenever you want to spend it, we can, you know, that's what, going back to the mayor's point, you can do it now, you can wait and decide, let's go back and rethink this all, you know, and, but I mean, yes, you, the goal would be to come back with a new list. For those, for the delta above the 1.6 we're already spending.
But we can't put it in like a interest, we can't earn money on it, we can't put it in a.
We can, but I think it's reportable interest that they require that we.
It can only be spent on a similar project.
Right.
So that, the best thing we can do is move it out of and pay what we're paying and, and have it be general fund. So yeah, the general fund interest would be general fund purposes, you're right. So that's what we want to do expeditiously.
I'd like to suggest or recommend that we also consider using a substantial amount of this money for the remaining ADA ramps that need to be constructed. This is languished for many years, so.
Yeah, that's certainly, it's up to the policy direction of the council.
I would also want to entertain, out of respect for our employees and maintaining them, given the fact how much inflation has taken its toll on everybody. Moving that number from 3% to 4% at least, at least, and want to know what that number is, maybe even up to 5%. I know that might be a bit more than we want to go and what we're comfortable with, but I want to know what the total impact is, if that's possible of moving that number around. Because I do want to stay to a certain degree competitive with other cities and take care of the folks that we have. Because I think we have some great people that are going to face a serious hit this year.
So I think Jim did the calculation, what each 1% was, because we and I went through this exercise about what it was, so each 1%.
Only $5,000.
5,000 for each 1% you change.
Okay.
So if the council wants to do it, and you know, I'm always at a point where at staff, it's always difficult to ask for a. it's always difficult to ask for a lot, you know, you always want to be.
Well, I'm asking.
Yeah.
And I'm one of five, and I give respect to all my peers, and I'm not saying we all should write a blank check, but we rely a lot upon the people in that room and in those rooms, and whether they're consultant, whether they're full-time, doesn't matter, we're all facing some pain, and I would like to keep some people here as much as we can and stop the turnover to the degree that is possible. Obviously, wish Jim all the best, and, and one day we'll all be in that situation, and, but I, you know, for five thousand dollars, I, it's not going to bother me, certainly not. And then obviously, I share, Councilman Colacott's concerned with the ADA accessible ramps, and then I'm spending a heck of a lot on, frankly, infrastructure needs that have not been met and that are long, long, long overdue. I'd be careful about putting it into a savings account for future years. I just, we're a pretty conservative group on this council. We share different points of view and, but I, I think candidly, we are a very level-headed group, generally speaking. I don't know what the future is going to be for the city, but we have the capability of making very good decisions, very diverse decisions. I would be, maybe I'm just not trusting of future individuals, but I do know this group, and I do trust this group, and I would want to make the best decisions for the city moving forward at this dais.
So I think what our goal is here is, and our point is, I think what we'll be doing is budgeting to allow us to do the transfer for the sheriff and costs, and we'll come back in a separate item and you guys can talk about that. So this isn't something that has to be decided as part of the budget, it's, it is, has to be spent by twenty-twenty-four. That is the, the only real ultimatum that we have. So we've got a couple of years to do that, so I think we want to do it in a, in a manner that's well-thought-out and.
Hold on, that's, that was my question, is this money, if we're already spending this.
Does not have to be spent.
Does not have to be spent.
The other money we have to transfer.
The other one, yeah.
So we want to make the transfer now and not have to worry about it.
Right.
And then you have, you can spend it.
Want to make sure I was.
In our lifetime, you, we don't, we can hold it and deliberate all you want.
Can I just, I, I concur with Councilman or Mayor Protem Rosini about, you know, the conservative council, and, and I'm not in a rush to spend anything, but I do think that, you know, we have historically been conservative, and I agree that, you know, I think it would be best if we kind of try and plan for the future without leaving it up to people that we have no idea.
I'd love to plan for it and put something.
Right.
On a schedule, whether we have to spend it all right now or not was really where I was going to, but if we said, yes, we've got this extra money to add every year, I was thinking about road repairs, that, that's such a significant thing we want to do, but it, does it really need to be done all at once? Or is this something, if we increase the budget year over year, it would actually give us better roads longer by having a budget that's further out rather than just spending it all at once? That's all I was really thinking about of.
Right. One of the things that I was pulling together, when, when the business recovery activities, if you listen to the forecasts, there's a lot of talk of recessions coming, so it might be wise that a hundred thousand not to give it out now, but basically to keep our businesses intact, if a recession hits in a year or two, we can help them when they're in dire straits. Because the worst thing that happens is you start to see a vacancy rate in this shopping center, because that's going to affect a lot of businesses. It's a domino effect. If the dry cleaners or the drugstores not being able to make it, then guess what? They're not going to stop at Subway, they're not going to stop, you know, things start happening where people like, eh, I don't need to go there anymore, you know? So I think what we want to do on some of it is, is hold the money and sort of have it there and, you know, and deal with it down the road is sort of, but that's sort of, yeah, I mean, it's a case-by-case basis, what you want to do. I would only say that we, that when we come back on the roads and we, we'll come back with a list, I think you're going to find that there are some roads that need to be done, and if we had more money, we would have listed them in the first place, but we don't. So we always cap it where we have our capped money. So I would suggest that we go in that direction, that we, you, you do spend them. And then the other thing too, is when you're doing a project like that, there's economies of scale when you're doing a road, so a company will come in and want a bid on it. We don't get a lot of bids sometimes because of the scale of our projects. You know, one point six million dollar project sounds huge to us, but that's pocket change for a city like San Ana to do a road prod, you know, road projects and things. I mean, they just, they, you know, I used to joke at it, like Villa Park's a rounding error to them, so.
The one street.
Yeah, so it's, you know, and if you see the streets in these other cities, you're like, wow, look at all they're doing. So, you know, they're doing much larger projects, and companies tend to want to do larger projects because they can mobilize and get a lot more done. So there is an advantage to not spreading that money out and getting it some done, and you know, you also get roads done, you know, you're catching up to the curve.
Matt, that's kind of my concern, just is catching up to the curve, because I know Councilman Colacott has raised the concern for quite a long time and has given out a number, forgive me, I don't know exactly what the number was, but it was a number of years, well, well beyond what this council and frankly, several future councils are going to be capable of. So I wanted to take advantage of that opportunity and try to get us closer to Colacott, even if, you know, it's never going to be that way, but at least gets us closer to that. And it also rewards those folks that have paid their, their taxes for so long, and for those that are newly investing in our community that are pulling all these building permits, so. But I do understand your, your points, and I think they're valid, and I look forward to future discussions about this. Thank you.
Quick question on the ADA accessible ramps, do we have an idea of how much that was? Could cost?
We, we have budgeted twenty-five thousand and consistently tried to, you know, move through that. We don't have a listing of all of how much it will cost. Some of it will be available, we can do, you know, potentially if it's going to and from schools, you can use AQMD money. So there's, there's a lot of things, and we have to take a really hard look at that about what, what we can do and what it would cost. So, but, you know, if we have time, we have time to do that. So if we have a general fund and we don't have to spend it today, tomorrow, or make that decision, we have time to evaluate and come back to the council. So it would be my recommendation anyway, that we come back on the ARPA monies, allow us to move forward in the transfers that we need to, and, you know, the budget money, we have to budget system, and then also covering the sheriff's costs, and in that way allows us to move forward and come back with a plan, and time for you all to think about it, and maybe even have public input and comments and public, you know, workshops with the public to be available and have them come in and see what they're thinking might be done. So I think there's, there's a little bit of, you have, time is a little bit of a luxury right now and you have it. So I would, I would encourage you to probably maybe think on that a little bit and, and not rush, we don't have to decide. I'm just giving you an idea of the types of things, you know, could people say, oh, a million dollars or a million three, man, that's going to be, you know, that's going to go fast. That's going to go fast, and I just want people to sort of see if you were trying to divvy up what kinds of spread you could have.
And if I could, if I could add, we've got thirty-two linear miles of roads within the city, so. Seven hundred thousand dollars a mile.
Yeah, you're. That's a lot of road that we can get done, though, so, you know, there's a lot of things. So anyway, so.
But not all those roads need to be done.
We have a lot to do.
I just think it would be prudent to come up with some sort of like idea or estimate or kind of a ballpark on the handicap.
And, and again, some of those handicap cuts, et cetera, to the extent you do more roads, you do those in part of it, so you, you handle, you know, two birds with, not whatever the two, whatever it is, the saying goes, you accomplish more with, with less if you incorporate those into the road projects, is like we've been doing, so that's an advantage too. Okay. No other questions? I can, our, our next workshop is Monday, May sixteenth. We have a couple of items, obviously, that, that we've talked about. We'll get some information and we'll come back, we'll have a better idea of what our numbers are, some of the allocations and things, and some of them will be decided already at that point, like the sheriff will come through, and, and we'll have firm, firm, firm numbers. And then it allows Jim an opportunity to work through a new budget system and really hone down. So we'll, we're going to get to a more exacting level of detail in our next workshop on May sixteenth, again at five P M., and then we'll adopt the budget on June twenty-eighth, and we'll have that as part of our regular council meeting on June twenty-eighth. So that's where we are. I think you've given, you know, kind of a thumbnail sketch, and I hate, there's a lot of information thrown at you, but here's what it is.